I believe that the agenda stands as written as you have it before you. I'd like to hear a motion to accept the planning consultant's meeting notes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. I know that we have the minutes from the June 3rd and June 15th meetings. I hope you've all had a chance to read them. Could I hear a motion to accept?
Michael, on the minutes of June 3rd, I don't think you necessarily need to turn to, but on page 18, next to last paragraph, middle of that paragraph, the phrase for Tuesday, September 18, 2013, simply needs to be deleted.
Would that change? Could I hear a motion to approve the minutes of June 3rd?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Could I hear a motion to approve the July 15th minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion amendments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. In terms of correspondence, non-agenda items, from the Army Corps, we did receive both a J.D. and a delineation, confirmation for the bank, and in fact, I signed their plans this morning, so they're going to get started. They're working with C.A.B. and Hudson in terms of the mitigation and monitoring plan. That seems to be going quite smoothly. We also need to schedule our joint town-village planning board public hearing on the T.T.S.M. Park, in discussions with the village planning board, and circulating amongst you guys, September 17 at 7:30 was a selected time, and I think Art has a resolution to read in reference to this.
The board simply needs to pass a resolution, quote, "to schedule a special planning board meeting on Tuesday, September 18, 2013, at 7:30 P.M. for the sole purpose of conducting a joint public hearing with the village planning board on the Thomas Thompson-Sally Mazzarello T.C.M. Park implementation plan. Such special meeting to be held at Village Hall."
Okay. Could I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? In terms of the Stanford manufacturing, they're still waiting to hear from Office of Parks on one area on the site. They're trying to get the sign off from them, and then they'll be coming before us. You should all have received the C.A.B. minutes from July 1st. I don't know if the ones from August are ready yet, or whatever, but...
No.
No. Okay. And that's all I have. Anyone else anything before we get to our public hearing for this evening?
You've got a break before then.
Yes, we do.
Hearing is not scheduled until 6:45.
We have three minutes.
No, you have more than that, 6:45.
6:45?
Yeah. You scheduled it for 6:45.
I did. Oh, well, that wasn't very bright.
The only thing you could act on, which does not require applicant participation, would be the Z.B.A. referrals.
Right. Do you see those at the back of your agenda, in the back of your meeting notes? 6:45, hmm. Is there something else we were going to do that night?
I don't know, that's how it was scheduled.
There's something I haven't done.
I can see.
No, no. No, there are laws about that. The first one, Joseph Romeo, 15 Delano Drive, an area variance requested, RC5, from 20 feet to 10 feet in the rural countryside district to allow installation of a swimming pool at his home. I discussed this with, I guess it was with Ed, the building inspector, and our zoning law has different setbacks, minimum side setbacks, but you're not allowed to go below 20 in any district, even though some, for a swimming pool. So that's why he's asking for this particular variance. He wants to go down to 10 from 20. And I didn't see any problem with it myself.
The application points out the practical difficulties that were involved in terms of the location of an overhead deck and on the property and things of that sort that precluded being at the other location.
Right. So...
What does that mean? They put the pool in, and then you have a fence next to the pool because it has to be wrapped in a fence, so how close is the fence to...
I'm assuming that the fence is part of the pool installation.
Actually, the fence could be installed, it could be installed at the lot line. It would be eligible because it's not subject to the setback requirement, although under common law, you're supposed to maintain your fence far enough away from the property line so that you can maintain both sides of it from your own property.
We just went through the same thing with the same neighborhood six months ago with Kaplan. They've put up a fence to cover a propane tank. I mean, it's certainly normal in that neighborhood, it's a very quiet neighborhood.
Not yet.
Their situation, I believe, was also a fence height variance.
It was, about four foot.
It was a six versus four.
I'll read the resolution we have here and see what you think. "The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board has reviewed upon referral the application for area variance submitted by Joseph Romeo, and finds the requested variance to authorize a reduced side setback to raise no significant planning, zoning, environmental issues in the context of the existing pattern of residential development in the rural countryside RC5 District, including the Delano Drive neighborhood. The planning board understands there to be presence of practical difficulty cited in the application, and recommends the Z.B.A. rely upon its own study of the facts and decide this application in accordance with the criteria and procedures set forth at Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-124C and D." Could I hear a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving right along. Steven Siglak, 191 Reincliff Road, area variance. Mr. Siglak has submitted an application for, excuse me, for area variance for an increase in maximum permitted lot coverage in previous area in the RM1 District from the maximum of 10 percent, who currently has 13.7 to 17.7 to allow construction of a residential addition. Once again, this is that little area along Reincliff Road going in there, and those are small lots in that area. Having looked at the plan, I didn't see, nothing jumped out at me as being a problem, given the type of development in that area. It doesn't seem to create any issues. I don't know if anyone else had a look, had any questions about that.
This is also in the densest development that's allowed in the community.
Right.
And again, the variance that proposed here with respect to lot coverage is not associated with, or not accompanied by any further variances with respect to setback or anything of that sort, it's going to be compliant with all of those other requirements.
Let me read the resolution. "The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board has reviewed upon referral the application for area variance submitted by Steven Siglak, and finds the requested variance to authorize increased lot coverage to raise no significant planning, zoning, environmental issues in the context of the existing pattern of residential development within the RM1 District along Reincliff Road. The planning board understands there to be the presence of practical difficulty cited in the application, and recommends the Z.B.A. rely upon its own study of the facts and decide this application in accordance with the criteria and procedures set forth at Town Code Chapter 125, Sections 125, 124C and D." Could I hear a motion to approve?
Done.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And one more, and we still have time. Charles Wills, 21 Peacock Road, area variance. As noted earlier, Mr. Wills has submitted an application for area variance for reduction in minimum front setback from 50 to 40 feet in the rural countryside RC5 District to allow construction of a single-family dwelling on Lot 33 Peacock Acres. Once again, this is another case, this is, sort of points out that the rezoning, this was three acres when this subdivision went into place, and of course, the home sites and all that thing met all the setbacks and things at the time. The gentleman apparently has purchased one of those lots, but in the interim, we have gone from three to five acres, and therefore, the setbacks have changed. So that's the situation here. I'll read the resolution for you. "The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board has reviewed upon referral the application for area variance submitted by Charles Wiles, and finds the requested variance to authorize reduced front setback to raise no significant planning, zoning, environmental issues in the context of the existing pattern of residential development in the RC5 District and in particular Peacock Estates. The planning board understands there to be the presence of practical difficulty cited in the application, and recommends the Z.B.A. rely upon its own study of the facts and decide this application in accordance with the criteria and procedures set forth at Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125, 124C and D." Could I hear a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Now I think you relax for a while, for a few minutes.
There will be no singing.
Close enough.
Close enough? Alrighty. We're ready for our public hearing. Ramapo for Children, Camp Ramapo Road, off Salisbury Turnpike, Wetlands Permit and Site Plan Approval. Continuation from June 3, 2013, of public hearing on application for wetlands permit under Town Code Chapter 120, Wetlands, and application for site plan approval under Town Code Chapter 125, Zoning, Section 125-74, to authorize proposed construction of a 6,240 square-foot staff residential building, and a 4,375 square-foot multi-use building and associated site improvements within the Anchorage area of the 250-acre camp property. In the rural countryside RC5 District, as subject of revised plan set dated April 19, 2013, withdrawing three of six proposed site plan further revised to May 14, 2013, being an enlisted act under Seeker, planning board review of comments by acting planning board engineer, Wetlands consultant, C.A.B., and further considerations may be timely under Town Code and Seeker." So, take it away.
I'm not going to go through the whole project again, but just, you know, briefly, this is, we're here for site plan approval for the construction of a approximately 4,000-square-foot multipurpose building and a approximately 6,000-square-foot residential building. These are both located in the Anchorage section of the camp. As we said at the last couple hearings, there's currently an existing residential hall there. It's going to be roughly the same number, same number of occupants. The building will be a little bit larger than what's there now, where the proposed multipurpose building is going to be located. Currently now, there's a small basketball court there. Since the last meeting, we've done quite a bit of work. We did make, I think we... Are we on?
Yep.
We did make a resubmission on August the 12th. We realized that it was only a week prior to the meeting, but again, it was quite a bit of work that had to be done since the last hearing. And in that resubmission, we had responded to Weston and Sampson's July 29 comments, and that the engineer, Aaron, from Weston and Sampson, was going on vacation this week, but I did receive a phone call, and I think he was planning on calling you also, Mike. And I did not personally talk to him, but he did leave a message saying that he thought we did a pretty good job. In terms of addressing most of the comments, he did want to talk to me about some things to do with the storm drainage. So when he gets back next week, you know, I'll coordinate with him. So there was a resubmission there. We also had responded to Conservation Advisory Board comments, and then I also had a response to some general neighbor comments based upon the comments that we received at the last hearing. Also, with our resubmission, the camp had put together a report on some of their past efforts to contact, you know, the neighbors, go over some of their concerns. I know there's been some additional meetings that were held, and in a minute, I'll ask the camp to get up and talk about that. But the camp had submitted a separate report dated August the 12th on those efforts and some of the items that they proposed to hopefully address some of the neighbors' concerns. I'm not sure how much more that you want me to go through. I mean, one of the concerns was, that we heard at the public hearing, was the potential impact from the proposed well. Maybe if I'll just take, you know, a minute and summarize what I said in my letter, and also, we had provided a small, a map similar to this, that basically showed we've got an existing well, I know it's kind of hard for some of the planning board members to see, sorry. Here are, you know, the neighbors, Ann Drive, and here's, you know, our buildings over here. Well, we've got an existing well right here, which currently serves the Anchorage section of camp, you know, now. And this well currently is much closer to, you know, the neighbors than even our proposed well is going to be here in the back. And these wells are drawing off the same aquifer. So as I said at the last meeting, we're not talking about an increase here in water use. It's going to be the same, you know, water use that they're currently seeing. It's just that instead of drawing everything off of one of the wells, this well is going to serve, you know, our two new buildings in both the summertime and, you know, the wintertime. So in terms of, you know, the volume of water, it's still going to be the same amount of water that's going to be drawn out of the aquifer. And, you know, once again, this well here is much closer to the neighbors' wells than, you know, our proposed well. And when we started working with the county health department on this, and we obviously had to go to them and get an approval for the location here, you know, to drill this well, and the conversations that were held with them were basically this, that, you know, the current well is close to, like the neighbors, we were going to be much further, you know, away, and it was felt that there wouldn't be any need, while we were doing our pump tests, to do any monitoring, you know, of wells here. And as far, you know, as I know, and perhaps, you know, some of the neighbors have some different thoughts, but we have not heard of any, you know, reported issues, you know, with groundwater here, you know, the wells. So I think that we're pretty good with that. The other thing was about drainage. And I know that there's a small, not a small, there is a drainage path that comes right down through the woods here and comes down between these two houses here. And I think, I think the primary impact here is that this water is coming off the hill, and there isn't, you know, any catch basins or anything like that. And I think what happens is it just overland flows. And I was up to the camp, and I think it overland flows over top of the driveway and gets down into a small defined drainage channel, and then ends up, ends up down in here. But actually, thinking, and I'll go over it with the engineer next week, but I actually think we're going to make the situation better because we are going to take the roof water, we're either going to put it in infiltration trenches or rain gardens, and we're also going to have a catch basin right down here at the entrance where the driveway comes out onto the main drive. And it's not going to capture everything, but it will capture some of it, and we're going to be discharging it down in this area where, you know, the road is actually, is actually higher than, higher than the ground over on this side of the road. So I think it's actually going to help, you know, the situation, but again, I'll go over that with the engineer when he gets, when he gets back. I'm not sure what, you know, specifically that they still have some concerns on, maybe you can shed some more light on it.
Yes, in my discussion with Aaron, one of his concerns was that there was no quantification of before and after construction on the site, as to the amounts of water that were being dealt with, some concerns about the capacity of the rain gardens themselves, how were they sized to take water, and how much water would they take, soil conditions, things like that, the infiltration trenches. I know he had a number of questions about quantification, about exactly how this is all going to work. He didn't state, he doesn't think it won't work, he just said, "There's no way to know specifically right now." So I know those are amongst the questions he's going to want to discuss with you.
Okay. Well, I'll have to talk to him because we did submit, you know, a drainage report, and this is it right here, that does do the pre and post.
There may have been something, that may have come in subsequent to when I spoke to him, I don't know.
No, this was part, this was part of the August 12.
There may have been something in there he was also looking for, so he's going to bring that up with you.
Okay.
I know he's putting the report together, he had a preliminary report, Richard was going over it, but he had to leave.
Yeah.
And so, he didn't want to give us anything that wasn't completely done.
Sure, understood, yeah. It was short, it was, you know, short notice.
Short notice, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
So we did have those questions. I think another of the questions that we did come up was in terms of, I know, lighting, I don't know how that's being addressed, there were some questions I know neighbors had on lighting. We actually have a letter here from Mr. Weiss, if you'd like to read the letter.
Yeah, maybe, Adam, you can come up and maybe go over, you know, a couple things on some, you know, the efforts that you guys have been doing and...
This is, this is the only correspondence we've received this week, or since, I should say, the last meeting on this, on this application.
Should I read the letter?
If you'd like to, or, I think, I don't know, did the neighbors get a copy of it?
I don't believe so.
Then I think then you should read it so that they're fully aware of what's in it.
I agree.
And we do have copies, if anyone would like a copy.
Dear members of the Town Planning Board, I am writing in my capacity as the CEO of children, as well as the owner of a home in Rhinebeck. Ramapo is a not-for-profit organization that works on behalf of children who face obstacles to learning, including children with special needs, enabling them to succeed in the classroom, at home, and in life. I do not bring my reading glasses, so... Our Rhinebeck campus has served children with social, emotional, and learning challenges for over 90 years, and has played a critical role in the lives of thousands of families. As you know, Ramapo has plans to build two new buildings on our property, one on the site of an existing dilapidated building, and one on the site of an outdoor basketball court. These projects represent critical capital improvements for us, eliminating outdated facilities and providing enhanced year-round living and meeting space for the adults on our campus. These projects do not reflect an expansion in our scope of, or scale of service, or overall capacity. At the last public hearing, several of our neighbors expressed some concerns, particularly about noise. I want to address those concerns, to explain what we have already done to mitigate noise, and to describe what we have done since the meeting took place. First, when we were planning the buildings and laying out the site, our team was very sensitive to the issue of noise. Presently, Thomas's Hall, the building we intend to tear down, is the building closest to our neighbors on Ann Drive. This building has been the evening program and convening spot for young adult staff for as long as the campus existed, and predates the houses on Ann Drive or in Zapasko Village. Because we know that the sound carries across the camp road, we have placed the multipurpose building that will replace Thomas's Hall farther away and deeper in the woods, and we have oriented it so that staff who sit outside will be at the furthest point from the camp road. The building that will be placed on the current site of Thomas's Hall will be a staff residence that should generate very little noise and act as a buffer for sounds coming over from the new multipurpose building. In addition, as our architect has pointed out, newer building construction and materials will also be a tremendous help. In addition to building design, we have taken a number of additional steps to reduce noise. We place signs in our parking lots along the camp road that designate those areas as quiet zones, and we have conveyed to all staff that, as a matter of policy, they may not congregate in those spaces. We have also conveyed to our staff that no amplified music is to be played near the road or near the lake. We also reached out to our vendors, including the company that empties our dumpsters, and let them know that, other than an emergency, they cannot pick up or deliver anything outside normal business hours. During the summer, we are closing the gate at the entrance to the camp road, and a security person is now monitoring the traffic to ensure that these policies are followed. Over the last few months, we have gone to great lengths to establish open lines of communication with our neighbors, including the residents of Zapasko Village and the families who live in the three houses on the end of Ann Drive. On April 23, we met with Kathy Dunn, board president of Zapasko Village, to review our plans and enlist her help, reaching out to other members of the community. On May 17, we held an open house to which all neighbors were invited, that included a review of the plans and a tour of the site. Invitations were sent by email with follow-up phone calls, approximately 12 people attended. On June 1st and 2nd, all of our neighbors were invited to Ramapo's annual family day, at no charge. On June 18, after our public hearing was canceled, we met informally with the three residents of Ann Drive. July 15 was the public hearing at which several neighbors expressed concerns. On July 17, we sent certified letters to the concerned neighbors, inviting them once again to meet with us. On July 26, we met with additional representatives of Zapasko Village, Sue Carlson and Ann Mooreing, to address concerns and review our noise mitigation plans. On July 29, we met with Carl Paris of Zapasko Village to address concerns about lighting and devise a light reduction plan. On August 8, we met with our three neighbors on Ann Drive to review our current noise mitigation plans and to collaborate on plans for moving forward. Some of our neighbors on Ann Drive have suggested that we build a fence. We had a consultant come to Ramapo to determine the cost and feasibility. He advised us that a fence would be impractical, as well as ineffective with regard to noise reduction. Since then, we have met with the landscaper, who has suggested a plan that includes a combination of new hedges and trees that we believe is more feasible and will be more effective. We have shared this proposal with our neighbors on Ann Drive, and even though some of the plantings would need to be on their property, we have committed to absorbing the cost. We are currently, currently waiting for them to respond to this proposal. We are confident that we will reach some sort of consensus in the near future. In closing, the new buildings in Ramapo's proposal represent critical capital improvements. While not expanding overall capacity, they will give us nicer residential space and upgraded meeting space. Because our services to children have seasonality to them, we have a limited window during which we must break ground. We must complete construction by the spring before the arrival of our summer staff and the children we serve. We have designed this project with our neighbors in mind, and have done everything we can think of to mitigate noise and minimize any inconvenience the project might cause. We will continue to maintain open lines of communication, and we are committed to responding to any and all concerns sensitively and in a timely fashion. Sincerely, me.
Thank you. Members of the planning board, any questions, any... Let me open it up to the public, members of the public. Nothing?
None.
Yes. And if you'd just come up and sort of speak, or speak into the microphone.
How do you do? My name is Jane Gallo, and I'm one of the neighbors on Ann Drive, and yes, they have reached out in a very neighborly way to explain things. We still feel very strongly that some of the issues we have are, number one is drainage problems, and that's something that I don't know how that can be addressed. Noise problems, privacy problems, visual privacy, as well as, you know, possible, there've been times where people have trespassed across. What they have offered is five spruce trees. However, we have, my property back there is 100 feet. Five spruce trees are not going to mitigate all those problems. They will not thrive because there are large trees overhead. They probably won't, it would be almost impossible to plant them there. They need sunlight to thrive. And many years down the road, they'll maybe get to be big spruce trees, but, you know, maybe not in my lifetime, so it won't solve the problem for me. Whereas a fence, at least, will give me the, you know, the privacy barrier, and that's really what I feel is a more permanent solution. Spruce trees that are under these, this canopy of trees will die, and I'll have dead trees there, and that's not what I want. Anyone else? Well, I did speak to the landscaper today, and he had said that, you know, they do need sunlight to survive, as well as water, and they need to be near the canopy line of trees, which would bring them near my grass line, and that's where my well is, and I really don't want someone's backhoe going through like that on my grass and planting, and digging deep holes. I don't know how the rest of the neighbors in the neighborhood feel about it. Well, I do know, they're unanimous, but I didn't know if they wanted to come up and speak also.
So I'm Debbie Mimosa, I'm one of the neighbors on Ann Drive, I'm the one in the middle here. So a couple of things surprised me tonight that I will get to. As far as, yes, they have reached out to us since the meeting to work on ways to mitigate, to use the word. Our feeling is still that a fence would be more appropriate in speaking with them, and we understood from the last meeting, or at least I did because I was here, that there were possible issues regarding environmentally, animal life getting by and things like that. And then when we met with them, it appeared that their issues weren't environmental, they were problems with snow plowing on the road, and also with getting to the overhead... they were problems with snow plowing on the road, and also with getting to the overhead utility lines, which we addressed saying, well, certainly you could put a gate in the fence if you needed a utility cherry picker, whatever, to come and work on a utility line. The utility line is set back into, towards our yards more, but we would be happy to allow gates to be put in the fence, so that if there were, I mean, we're not gonna, you know, stop utility people coming in to fix the electrical lines. So, and, and the cost, obviously. In, in discussing the tree issue, they made a generous offer of planting a total of fifteen trees, five for each property, ten-foot spruces or some type of evergreen, and it would be on our property. We would have to agree to that, but they would absorb the cost up to twenty thousand dollars.
Two thousand dollars.
Two thousand dollars, sorry. Four hundred dollars a tree. My property, as Jane said, is, if you go the whole length of the, the linear wise, I'm several hundred feet. Five trees isn't gonna do anything, and again, by the time it takes to grow. If you move it closer to my house into, and, and I'm the one with the built-in pool, you know, now you're getting close to my pool, it's all shale back there. When they dug my pool, they had to blast. So we're looking at to plant a sizable enough tree to provide the privacy for entryway as also for sound. You're talking about blasting in my yard, again, like Jane said, I don't know how they're gonna get there, if they're gonna come from Ramapo down the hill, or, you know, come over my yard to get there to blast. We're talking then now about more sediment and things in my well, that I'm gonna have to deal with when they're blasting, not to mention damage to my pool or whatever, the closer it gets to that. So, and then, and again, in all the shale, is a tree even gonna survive? So, there, there are issues we have with the landscaping per se. And one other thing, I, you know, things just keep popping up that just don't make sense, and I'm a, I'm a common sense type of person. Landscaper was unsure what the reason for the trees was in speaking them, to them, because we wanted to have their landscaper that they spoke to and consulted with come out to our yard and explain why this would be a good thing, what would be involved, et cetera. Again, unable to come out and meet with us in the short period of time that we had since the last meeting, before tonight's meeting, but we certainly want to meet with him, but was unsure of the reason, didn't know it was for mitigation of sound or privacy. So it's interesting that they consulted a landscaper but didn't tell him why they wanted to put up the trees. So, things like that. You know, the new revelations about the drainage that they've noticed all of a sudden, that there is a track that leads in between our houses, why did that not come up before? We were talking about that, and people were shaking their head like we didn't know there was a drainage problem. And now, yes, we know there's a drainage problem right between the yards. And so now they're saying that the drainage is gonna move over and come over this way where the road is higher. Well, the road higher means it goes down further into our yards, more drainage. So I, I still have a few concerns about that. Again, we're willing to work with them, but we want good faith at first. I do commend them for the things they have done. I soft myself the signs for the quiet zone. Hopefully their counselors, you know, follow the rules with the music and the congregating and things like that. I do still have a concern if, right now, this isn't a congregating place, and the music has come, and the noise is coming from there, they're saying, well, it's still not gonna be a congregating place. But it isn't now, and the, the sound is coming from there. So, again, appreciate what they're doing, want to continue to work with them, but I think I still have unanswered questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else right now? Yes, if you want, if you'll just come over to the.
My name's Dan Walsh. I live at one thirty-nine Salisbury Turnpike, and I'm probably, along with Pete Huber, one of the largest landowners that borders on the Ramapo properties. We share the entry road into the camp, and we've been there for fifteen years, and I'm here in support of the camp, any efforts that they do to improve anything whatsoever. And in support, I'm here to share some of my experiences with them in the last fifteen years. Anytime there's been any kind of conflict or an issue whatsoever, they've always gone out of their way to ameliorate the problem, seek any kind of consensus, and if anyone is probably more aware of any use that the camp's been going through all these years, it's us. Every student, every child, every educator, every staff member pretty much goes right by our house and into the property. I see the buses, I see the Ginsburg food trucks going every day, and I have to tell you, I couldn't ask for better neighbors than everyone at Ramapo. They've been outstanding over the years. Any issue whatsoever, they'll talk to us about it. If I have an issue, I talk to them. If anyone sees the traffic, the lights and all that, other than folks at Sopasko Village or the Ann Drive residents, it's gonna be us. Our house is in, in plain view of the roadway going in there. As I say, we own half that roadway. We get back in there, but I know a lot of the staff, and I can tell you one thing about the counselors, is my oldest daughter was lucky enough to be a counselor there several years ago. And believe me, the counselors don't have any time to do any congregating or carrying on whatsoever. But the fact that all the counselors and students and educators had to go by our house and drive down, and could very easily come onto our property, trespass, to drink, to carry on, to litter, anything, absolutely not in any of the fifteen years has that ever happened. There's been no noise, no stray people, no litters, no vandalism, no break-ins, no threats, nothing but wonderful neighbors and great staff through the entire time. I'm very, very confident that with the engineers, the architects, it'll work out whatever environmental impact issues may arise from this project. But the fact that it's gonna actually move farther away from Ann Drive, I'm relatively familiar with the drainage issues back there, they can be ameliorated very, very well. Yes, there's a lot of traffic that goes down the road, and yes, when you go in there, you see all the residents on Ann Drive, there's no question about that. But there's ways to have visual noise buffers for that. A lot of folks in this town do that and do a great job. So, on behalf of one of the largest landowners that borders the entire southern side of the property, we're completely in support of this property, hope it goes through, hope the residents and the engineers can work out whatever solutions are needed to satisfy their concerns, I'd like to see the town go forward with this project. They do such tremendous things for the children, they do such tremendous things for all the educators, not just from the Rhinebeck area, but the entire Hudson Valley and the New York City area as well. And that can't be underestimated. They got special training and exposure there, which really helps get our kids up to speed that we also desperately need today. Thanks.
Thank you.
Question for you. Can you point over here on a map where your, your property is? Way down. So how, how far away from the road is your house?
Well, the roadway that goes in, goes like that.
So we're talking about, talking about two different entrances?
At the main entry road.
This is the main entry road. So everything at the camp has to go through this one single entrance.
Down here?
Down here. So it goes not only by our house, we see it, we hear it, and we understand what.
But you're quite, it's safe to say you're quite a bit further away from the camp.
Yes, correct.
Than they are, so, you know, unless the kid's really desperate to get in trouble, I mean, they're not gonna walk a half a mile down the road to go hang out on your.
But it's the only way in that they know.
I understand, I understand, but these, the issue we have are people who are walking from hall to hall on a normal, daily basis, and they're hanging out at night. Right, that's, the only time they go by your house is when you're coming or going from the property.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood.
And all the business that the camp has, from the service, construction, daily staff, the residents, the teachers, all has to come right in past our house. Any questions on that?
Thank you. As I recall, there, one of the questions about privacy was potential trespassing, things like that, and there was some discussion of a fence, not as a sound barrier, but just as a demarcation between properties, sort of like some of what they have on Burger Hill, where it goes along the perimeter of the park, and there are little signs saying, please don't go beyond this point, private property, something like that, which I know had been discussed, and might, might address that, that that would not, I don't think, be an excessively expensive project, if there's a fence such as that, as a fence to protect private property, things of that sort. Now, the noise thing is a whole different issue, that, that does bring other issues, other engineering concerns into, into play. I know that there was some discussion of staff supervision, maybe something's, you know, a little noisy a few nights, things like that, that's a supervision problem, which I think that the camp is trying to address. I'm just wondering if these buildings are built, and if we can have a privacy fence, if we can have some of these other things done, the lighting looked, dressed, looked into, if the noise issue is something that can be abated through supervisory activities, as well as the construction of the new buildings, as opposed to a fence?
And, and we brought that up in our meeting with, that the, the noise isn't the top on the list. That, that falls somewhere down below.
Okay.
It's more the drainage.
Right.
The, the privacy, you know, those types of things. How our, our lands are gonna be affected as far as the water running down toward the wells, et cetera, et cetera. The noise wasn't the top thing on the list.
Well, the drainage definitely has to be addressed, as I think you all know, and you're.
And that was, that was up on.
And they will be working with our engineer to make sure that that is addressed, and done in such a way that it is, that problem is ameliorated.
Is the, is the privacy issue one of visual access between properties, or is it simply a case of defining the property line such that there isn't trespass beyond the property onto yours?
It's both.
It's both?
There's a, there's a pool in the one backyard.
So a rail fence is not the answer, you're talking about a stockade type or something of that sort?
Yeah. I, I'd like to know, I, I mean, I see one statement that says ineffective, ineffective with regard to noise reduction, which I think, think is a ridiculous statement. Obviously, we can put up a fence that's effective to noise reduction, it's a matter of cost. So, could someone clarify what impractical means? I mean, we heard the two thousand dollars worth of trees, which is a pretty simple, down and dirty, you know, if, you know, fifty or sixty trees along the back might start to make a dent, but chances are fifteen aren't, I would have to agree with. What is impractical? What kind of price will we be looking at to put in some kind of stockade fence?
Good question.
It sounds pretty big, I mean, four hundred feet at least there?
Impractical, and again, Adam, I wasn't, I wasn't there when you guys, you know, had met with the, sorry, when Scott met with the fence person, but having, having had some of these issues with us representing planning boards ourselves, you know, and noise issues, you know, with neighbors, you know, the noise, typically, a noise fence has to be high, because sound will travel over. So to put up, you know, a six-foot-high stockade fence wouldn't really do that much for the noise, because the noise is gonna go, you know, and travel over. So here, again, you know, I wasn't there when these folks came, but I think based upon what I've seen, is that, you know, a noise fence has to be pretty, pretty high. I know we, we did one down in, down in High Park where there was, you know, a church, and there was some concerns about, you know, the neighbors and, you know, the generator and this and that. And I think the noise fence had to end up being, I think it was like twelve feet high. Now, it wasn't, now, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't solid for the twelve, but they went up like six or seven feet, and then had a six-foot-high fence with some, like, acoustical panels on it. But typically, you know, a noise fence, if you're gonna try to mitigate noise, is typically higher. It's not just like, you know, in our, you know, our yards, putting in a six-foot-high stockade fence.
Right, but you're not expecting silence.
You're, you're more concerned about privacy.
Right, exactly. Exactly.
So, so is there a possibility that the real issue is the pool and the use of the pool, and perhaps a smaller fence blocking the vision from the pool would suffice, rather than two-hundred-foot of fence along the whole back of the property?
Well, Jane also has a pool. And, you know, the kids playing back here.
So? Gotcha.
It's not a singularly pool.
So what's the distance, what's the distance from the, the furthest house to, I guess, Debbie, and there's another house past yours? So what's the distance?
This is from where to where?
First house to the last house, basically.
This house to this house?
Yeah. The Ann Drive property.
Uh, this is, I wanna see, was it a hundred feet, probably, you know, two-fifty, three-hundred feet from house to house? Oh, I see where you're, I see, you know, where you're getting at, you're getting at.
Yeah, what's the length of the adjoining property line? Property lines combined?
I'm gonna guess about, you know, five-hundred feet.
Five-hundred five.
I don't, I don't have it right off the top of my head.
Okay. Did you get pricing on fences for that?
We didn't get, we, I spoke to, was a consultant that came out, and he took a look at it, and because of putting it on the road, we first talked about starting at the Anchorage parking lot, you know, right past the road, all the way down to Jane's house, he said, his comments, he's the one who directed us to a landscape, his landscaper saying that he felt trees and putting, and in trees would be a bit more effective in terms of mitigating noise and, and sight, and so he directed that because of some of our concerns of the snow removal, and he said he'd be out in several years replacing the fence, and he thought that the trees would be a more cost-effective and better solution.
So he never gave you a price? He wouldn't even bid on it?
Well, he did talk about doing it as a mill, like, where our power lines are, so they've been clearing all of that out, and he said that it would be around thirty, twenty-five to thirty thousand.
Well, I wouldn't disagree. The trees would be nice, but you just need a hundred of them, instead of fifteen.
Well, I'm saying, in terms of, in terms of our, it was sort of, when we spoke to them, that was the starting point, and we asked them to call Mike Mandys, and, you know, Jane spoke to him today, we encouraged him to go out to see their property, to even see, he hasn't been out on their property to see if there was a possibility or what. So that was, that was just a starting point of, he was on our side, looking, and, and so that was just sort of our starting point of, you know, this is what we thought about, let's hear, we haven't heard any response from him, he hasn't been out on their side really vigil. Because again, part of the thing we had recommended was putting a precipia, which is all along our road, because there's something that would grow very well, and so we planned on doing that on our side, but we talked about the canopy of trees, he said, because the way if you look at the, we would have to clear out the brush that's already there, some of the trees that are there, put trees in, and that didn't seem sensible to clear anything, to put more trees on, so that's when the idea came, maybe we could go on their side of their property. And so, we didn't go on their side yet, so that was the idea, and I know they've been on vacation, and then he was on vacation this week, and so I think the first contact's been this Monday, and so that's sort of just, I would say, where we are, if you guys, if that's correct.
So what we're hearing, I think, is that, you know, as we've been, as we've been saying it, and it may not be as much of, you know, a noise issue, but more, you know, a trespass issue, right? I mean, that's.
And privacy.
Yeah, and privacy, right, so.
It indicates a multi.
Yeah, I don't mean, you know, to minimize it, yeah.
For us, the noise is a larger issue. We have not had frequent people crossing onto the property, but the noise is centered directly behind my house. And our concern is that you are now increasing and making the building that's there a year-round building.
Now, the one that's there now is not used year-round, is that correct?
Not according to that. It's not.
No, it's not here.
You're told that there's a two-room apartment that's there, and now there's going to be full-time year-round staff, you know, and, and that's a concern, because, you know, you're saying there's not noise, but you're going to have that centered right there. You know, so in addition to the recreation area for the staff, you know. And, and, you know, they have been very gracious, they've talked about the signs they put up, they've asked the staff to travel through back trails on the property. And, you know, we certainly appreciate those things, but I have to tell you, Adam told us he drove swipe down our street, and from the end of our street, not in our yards, he could hear the noise loud and clear.
What noise are you hearing? People speaking?
The, and, you know, it's not, it's for us, it's not, yeah, you can hear conversations. There's, you know, if I'm in my kitchen and the doors are open, it sounds like someone's on my back porch, we turn, you know. And, and we, none of us are objecting to, and we've been very clear with our, you know, to the noise generated by the kids, we're not talking the daytime noise. You know, the, the children, that's not our issue, it's the late-night, early-morning staff noise. You know, it's hard.
I'm concerned, because last month, when this gentleman stood up here, we sent him away about noise, pretty much exclusively, okay? Now the tone, from the people that were in your communities, you were complaining about noise, okay?
Which interpretation?
Now, all of a sudden, it's changing, and I'm concerned about that, because this is a moving target. He addressed, whether you like the answers or not, is another discussion, but he addressed what he wanted to do about the noise abatement, okay? And I think it was a very positive response from the camp to do that. And now I'm hearing privacy, and the other thing I want to ask you about privacy is it, privacy that you don't want people looking at you, or you don't want to look at them? Which is it?
I, I have to say, when I spoke last month, I addressed.
I have to say, when I spoke last month, I addressed the privacy issue and talked about people coming into my yard, asking me for job.
She did do that. I understand that part. That's the trespassing discussion and I have no problem with that.
I also addressed people walking by, making derogatory and very inappropriate remarks to my children.
That's a religious ceremony he has to deal with his people.
Right. But I should address it last month. And I addressed the noise. I also discussed the wet in my yard. That was a big part of it. I'm not saying that noise isn't an issue. I'm saying it's, it's part of my issue, but it's not a highest priority. And it wasn't the highest priority of mine a month ago. My wet backyard is my highest priority. The noise is also a problem.
Yeah.
As I said, I mean, and as this gentleman said, I hear the delivery trucks going by at 6:00 in the morning. I hear the garbage trucks come, the garbage receptacle is right behind my backyard. I don't have a problem with that. That's normal noise. I expected that when I moved into the property. I expected to hear children. I don't have a problem with that. I, I have a problem with some of the noise coming, the derogatory comments, the people, you know, coming through my yard. All of those in general are issues that I would like to see addressed. They are working on them. Yes, absolutely.
What about the privacy?
I still have questions.
Is it, is it the privacy you don't want to look at them or you don't want them looking at you? That's what I'm trying to understand.
I, I don't, it doesn't, I can look at them. I don't, I don't care.
No, I'm, just for my own classification.
I see the cars go by, I see the kids go by, I hear, you know. But again, you know, them making comments, my children making comments about me, thinking I can't hear them.
The comments are an issue that you can deal with them. It's, he's the manager. He knows how to shoot employees like any other manager does. But we have to appreciate with a year-round facility now, we're going to have increased people walking past and they can't possibly police every single counselor that comes by there. So I think it's reasonable. It's just a matter of they're, they've started and they are making suggestions and you people have to get together and figure it out.
And we are.
The discipline thing, Woody, you're absolutely right. Michael said the same thing. They have to clamp down on their people and say, look, don't even look over in that direction because she's going to give us hell.
Yes, ma'am.
I know unanimously, I can say that what Mr. Walsh said, we agree with 100% and we support the camp and it's 100% in that regard. I have no problem looking at the children. I just retired from Anderson Center for Autism. I have no problem even with sounds, the odd sounds or whatever. I, I've been in nursing the disabled disabilities my whole career. Elizabeth works with children. You're in nursing. It's, we have no problem with that. Total acceptance and embracement of the camp and its mission. I just want you to know that.
So I think we're down to plantings or a fence?
I think there are three points here which seem to be something to deal with here is the drainage issue, the sort of trespassing issue, and a noise issue. It seems the drainage issue, the engineers are going to have to work that out. Stuff can't go off-site. I mean, that's not permissible. That has, and that will have to be resolved. The privacy issue, perhaps some sort of a stockade fence, something like that with signs people off your property so that they know not to come on your property to try and protect that part of it. There may be some plantings that could go in too, from an ornamental standpoint, to just try and make it look a little nicer, give you a little more visual blockage, something like that. The noise issue, from what you're saying, if I'm interpreting it correctly, it's basically late at night or early in the morning and it's not the kids, it's not the function of the camp. It really is a staff management problem and I think they recognize that and I think they're aware of that. And I think the only way to really resolve that is through staff management because it's like if you live in the village of Reinbeck, you're going to have people walking by your house all the time. You're going to, you have problems like that all the time anyway with people. It becomes a community management problem. What I would like to see here is the engineering issue will have to be solved before we can approve this. The privacy issue, it seems like a stockade fence, something like that, a split-rail fence is not nearly as expensive as obviously as some sort of a large stockade fence, something of that sort. I know on Burger Hill, they did that. They had to circle the whole 76 acres to do that, to keep the neighbors for privacy reasons, to keep people from leaving the park, going on private property. I think that can certainly be done. And the third thing in terms of noise, the noises that you're describing is objectionable. It's clearly a management, a staff management issue. I would personally like to see the camp given an opportunity to address that. We do have a noise ordinance in the town and if that's not addressed, what you do is you call the zoning enforcement officer. He's hopefully trained in how to use that little noise device because there are noise limits at the property line that have to be met or it's a violation of town law. And if it comes to that, hopefully through management of staff, it won't come to that. And I think they're trying.
Absolutely.
But I think the engineering thing will have to be solved, the drainage. I think some sort of a stockade fence, split-rail, something like that with proper signage to keep people off your property, keep them backing away from your property would hopefully solve most of the, you're always going to have some people coming out being a, you know, it's human beings are human beings. But it sounds like the camp is really, really trying to make this work. I mean, you obviously really like the kids, you like what the camp does. It sounds like you guys really have made an effort to get together. It seems like those three points might be sufficient to resolve the issues that you guys are having there by the camp. But we're going to have to hear from the engineer about that drainage problem because that clearly is something that we, we need to make sure is not happening. That's, stuff's not supposed to leave the site. You're supposed to be as wet as you were before they were there, but not wetter, so to speak. And then that's the lines along which I'd like to see us try to go. And hopefully you guys keep talking to each other because it seems like you're really making a lot of progress. I mean, everything I'm hearing from the neighbors here, they like the camp, they like the program, they like the kids. They obviously don't want to see you out of there. They just would like to see some of these things addressed and it sounds like you both really are making the effort, which I fully appreciate. I'm waiting to hear from the engineering, getting that straightened out. I'd love to hear a nice little fence proposal for privacy, just to try and keep the property separate so people know where they can and can't go. I think the staff is really, management is really trying to work on that other morning and night type noises. I think if we can get those things working properly, I think we can go forward with this project. Anyone else on the town planning board have anything they'd like to say?
Yeah.
Any other comments from the public or the camp?
I'll just have a question. Can you respond to the, the idea that he's encouraging a fence? Because what we meant when you used that fence was not going to happen.
First, I would say that when we approached the fence, it was with the assumption that it was principally for noise reduction. So when we first looked at a fence, and I, I think we believe, and I would just say a few weeks ago, more than that, you know, I rode my bike down And Drive all to get a sense for the noise. And the one thing we've been upfront about is the acoustics are idiosyncratic. It is true that if a person is talking in a normal voice camp, you can sometimes hear them. I, I don't, that seems to be the acoustics of the landscape. I don't think, a fence is not going to do anything and, and as Pete pointed out, to do something that would mitigate noise would be so massive, I just think it's, it's unrealistic. Now, we're happy to look at a fence as a, something to create privacy and we're happy to have that conversation. I would just say though, that right now, the brush between the camp road and your backyard, as we talked about when you visited, is pretty thick. It's almost impenetrable for, it's not something, it really almost probably better than, than any fence would be in terms of, Debbie, if someone appeared in your yard at some point, I apologize. I didn't, you know, I don't know what happened. It's not, I don't know the details of the story, but I, you know, I think we all agreed that it's, given the current state of the vegetation, there's a natural barrier. Now, again, I'm happy to, if, if, if a basic fence would be better for you guys than plantings, I'm happy to have that conversation as long as we agree that it's not going to address the noise issue. It would only be an additional barrier to convey that this is the demarcation line for other property. That's a conversation we're happy to have.
It has to be better for noise than nothing. It has to be better for noise than.
But as Pete, as Pete already said, if you really want to stop noise, you have to use some real engineering acoustic techniques with baffles and tall fences. So you're really going to get a little bit of both out of a fence. You're not going to get a great, you're still going to hear people in your kitchen.
The light issue, if you're talking, this is now a year-round residence, you know, that, yeah, right now the trebery is that in a couple of months, it's gone and it's there and it's a straight shot through. And this will help, a fence would help with lighting and the foot traffic that's going to be right outside my backyard.
Just let me, to reiterate, and I appreciate your point, but this is not an expansion in our year-round capacity or program scope in any way. This is, these buildings are not representing increase in the number of people. It's just upgrading the facilities that we have to house them. So it's not going to be.
And where they're all going to live. When we met with you the other night, you explained that these people are now housed all over camp.
Some of, some of them are currently housed, some of them are housed closer to you than they will be. Some of them are housed in the lodges that are much closer to your houses. So I can only say that we honestly believe that in terms of engineering, but also in terms of sound and other factors, this project is better and will improve and has been undertaken with some of those issues in mind. But again, you know, we're happy to, we're committed to trying to work it out and we're happy to talk to you. Just, we want to be realistic and not throw money at something that we don't believe is going to produce the outcomes that, that people are hoping for.
Well, hopefully the staffing supervision will deal with noise. The lighting situation, I think that if we can get some good intent, good attention to minimizing necessary lighting, making sure it's cut-off lighting, making sure lighting that's not needed past eight or nine at night, whatever, is turned off. I think that can address that sort of problem. Very often, I know in the past, large developments, things like that, the lights go on and they just stay on until the sun comes up the next day. So I'm, I would assume that, you know, proper lighting, and we do have lighting ordinance now too in the town about light trespass and whatnot, that that can actually be addressed, that the amount of light you need for security reasons, things like that, is not necessarily the amount of light that in the past we have traditionally seen in situations like this.
And just towards that end, Scott and Carl Paris from Sopasco, we've been spending a lot of time working with him, going through all the lighting, changing out some of the lighting, redirecting the lighting, and we are completely committed to make sure that the lighting is not negatively impacted.
So that's the fourth thing that we'd like to hear when we next meet is lighting, to go with a privacy fence, to go with staff supervision, and to go with the drainage issue that needs to be resolved. So those are the four things I think that we need to have resolution on.
The lighting, just, just very quickly, the lighting for these two new buildings, any lights that are going to be on the building are going to be recessed in the soffits. So there's not going to be any new lighting on the outside of the building, no floodlights, you know, no nothing. It would just be, you know, downlights and so, but maybe we can put that in our next, you know, response.
That would be good. And those that aren't needed, say at night for security reasons, you know, safe passage, things like that could be turned off.
Okay. Now, you know, the fence, if that's what, if that's what the camp ends up working out with the neighbors, I believe we're just talking about a fence that's a certain distance off of our access road. I don't believe we're talking about going in, because I don't, we don't want to go in and, we don't want to go in and clear out brush and clear out, clear out underbrush that provides some screening.
You want it along the access road, barnet backs, you can plow your snow. But you basically want people to see, not a natural berry, they think they can go as far as they want, but an obvious berry that stop here.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
No, no, you want to be able to maintain it, you want it to look nice, you know, just off the road, it looks good.
Right. We don't want to go in and clear any brush or anything like that that currently serves as.
I don't think anyone wants any brush.
No, I just want to make sure. Just, we just want to make sure. That's all.
Right. And is that the distance, is that the distance, Michael, we're talking about, is the And Drive property?
I think whatever is necessary to prevent people from entering those properties on And Drive.
Right, right. I mean, you don't want to go the full.
I don't think it has to go the whole distance. No.
Why don't you just take the drainage situation, make a moat around it and then you resolve both the problems at the same time?
But you know, that's what we were going to do, actually. I can't believe, I can't believe you said that. I can't believe you said that. And then just, just quickly, until you brought, until you folks brought up the drainage issue at the last meeting, we weren't up to speed on that, you know, that you were having a problem. So once you said that, you know, we do have issues, we went out and we looked at it, we walked around like the woods and we saw there where there was a defined, you know, path. And it seemed to me that it was water coming down off that section of camp overflowing, you know, the road and going down into that, like, ravine. So based upon that, we made some changes on the plan and we're going to work with the engineer. And I think we're going to actually be able to make the situation, you know, better for you. So that's the whole purpose of the public hearing because honestly, in all the years that I've been working at the camp, which has been probably 20 years now, this is the first project that we've really done up in this section of camp. So that's the purpose of the hearing, for you guys to come and tell us things that are like an issue so we can hopefully make the situation better. So, so the other thing is we're, we're actively working with the, with the Dutchess County Health Department. So when is your next meeting in September?
16th.
16th? All right. Because what we're hoping that night, and, you know, we understand we have to do some more work on the fence and I'm going to work with the engineer on, on drainage. But we're hoping, you know, at that meeting, that we may have an opportunity to close the hearing and have the planning board possibly consider a conditional approval that would be subject to at least, you know, what I know would be county health department approval. I don't think we'll have it by then. It might, you know, be close, but I know the camp is anxious to hopefully start construction on the buildings before, you know, the snow flies and get the foundations. And so we understand we've got some, you know, we've got some things, you know, to do, but, you know, we would hope that at the next meeting, we'll have some more positive news and we'll, and, you know, we'll try to get that in, you know, a couple of weeks in advance. Would that be enough so that?
The sooner you can get it in because I think it's very valuable to work on the engineering issues with Weston and Sampson. So you can, you can work with them. I think you're working with Carl Paris on lighting. I think that's excellent. You're going to be developing a fence plan to go along that area. And I'm sure that the, the staff management is dealing with a noise abatement program for early morning and evening.
Yeah. And I was there today, in fact, and this was the first time I was there. I don't know when you guys put up the fence, you know, at the entrance, you know, the gate? That's, is that fairly recent, right?
It's been there a few years now.
What, the gate?
When's the last time you were there, Pete?
Well, that wasn't.
During the off year, when it, during the, we don't have it closed.
Oh, all right, okay. Yeah, all right. I haven't been there since camp's going on. Okay. But that works good because, you know, the girl's there at the entrance and, you know, she checks in and, so that's another good thing.
So we're going to be continuing the public hearing. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to say this evening?
Michael, I have a recommendation for you.
Uh-oh.
No, you're going to continue the public hearing to the 16th.
At 6:35.
At 6:35. Don't get confused, there's a mention of the 19th in my notes. But beyond continuing the public hearing to the 16th, I, I think this project progressed to the point that should all of the list of five requirements be satisfactorily addressed addressed in the interim, the board might be in a position at the sixteenth of September meeting to close the, to close the hearing and consider, as Peter suggested, a conditional approval resolution. In that case, I think you would be directing me or authorizing me at this point in time to prepare a contingent resolution with NECD for your consideration, if all, if everything falls into place.
And so that everyone understands, a conditional resolution means, yes, we may give approval, but until those conditions are met, I don't stamp and sign the final plan. They can't do anything.
And you won't consider the resolution on the sixteenth, unless...
So this is a conditional NECD?
No, no.
No.
Why not just do a conditional NECD? So they have to meet the requirements over a certain period of time?
No, they would have to meet the requirements in the resolution of approval of the project.
Where the site plan can be approved.
In other words, getting health department approval, making sure that the fence plan is approvable, is, is in sight, that they have the lighting plan, that the drainage issues have been addressed and satisfactorily, that our engineer says they're good.
They start construction now if they have the...
No, they can't, no, no.
Yeah.
Until I stamp and sign, they can't do anything.
Every one of those issues...
I thought you could, though.
No.
No, every one of those issues, except staff management, is reflect, has to be addressed on the site plan. That is, that, on the site plan, that is presented before close of the public hearing and before action by the planning board.
Right. It was similar to the one we just did, did for the bank there by, by Williams. Until those certain conditions were met, which have now been met, I could not stamp and sign, they couldn't do anything. They could flag the wetland, they could, but that was it. So now today, they can actually know, go and get a building permit to do that work. And it'll be the same here, until I stamp and sign the site plan, they can't get a building permit, so they, no, they can't do anything. Okay? What I would, I have a resolution here somewhere?
No, you don't have a...
I don't have a resolution here somewhere?
No.
I'll add live.
A motion to continue the public hearing to the sixteenth of September at 6:35, and should, should it be timely to consider, have, have the planning consultant have available a, a resolution for your consideration?
For both seeker and approval.
Right. It's combined resolution.
Could I hear a motion to approve?
Approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. We will meet here again on the something of September at 6:35 this time, and I want to commend you guys for all working together. Please continue to do this, because I would love to be able to approve this project so they can get going, and also make sure that your, your issues are all addressed, so that you're all, you know, happy neighbors. Thank you all very much for coming out tonight.
Core group.
Okay, next. That was our last public hearing for this evening, so now we're going on to less exciting material. Core Group Properties LLC, Middle Road, special use permit and site plan approval. Initial presentation of applications for special use permit pursuant to Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Section 12520 and 12568 EEE, and site plan approval in the matter of establishment of a special event venue on the parcel in the Office Research Park District, planning board processing as may be timely under Town Code and Seeker.
I am ready.
Fire away.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Wheeler, DF Wheeler Engineers, and we are talking about, about the greenhouses and specifically the event center at, I think what everybody kind of knows is the Anemone Farm. So we have...
We can hear you.
Okay.
As long as you're talking into it, we can hear you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Kind of shorts out. We have a, we've made a presentation and we've made a submittal. The several issues that were outstanding were the expansion, well, actually, let's do this, okay? Was the overflow parking, basically two empty fields out here where the greenhouses used to be. We have designated parking in here and in here for the site plan application itself. We have also applied to the health department for part of the septic system, I'm sorry, the septic system in here, the expansion area here, septic tank, pump chamber, and we've also gone forward with a public water supply application, again, to the health department. Those are pending at the health department right now. Tonight, we're looking, hopefully, to address any questions that you may have, and also, hopefully, maybe we can, we would look for a public hearing date, perhaps.
Okay, I know Art noted a couple of little glitches in the earlier application. I don't know if these have been corrected.
They're, they're not showstoppers at all.
No.
Well, one is, one is simply a correction to your plan with respect to the identification of the community that's involved.
Right.
But that's, that's not the issue. The, the other issue is the EAF. There's correspondence, and I think it was your, your email, which referred to the submission of a new EAF as had been prepared by Dan Schuster.
Right.
The EAF that was submitted to the town is, in fact, an old EAF dated May of last year, signed by Dan's Lisa, isn't it, Dan's wife Lisa?
Right.
So we need the copy of the Schuster EAF.
Oh, we, I thought we provided that with our submittal.
No, the package...
Not a problem. I'm going to...
We can hear you, it's, it's working.
Okay. I'm going to provide it to the board tomorrow morning, and I can email it to you.
Yeah, that would, that would be great.
Okay.
Those are the only, those are the only questions. Beyond that, unless the board has questions, I think the key issues that were raised by the planning board at the sketch plan conference have been addressed. Anything else might come up in comment from neighbors, as it did in the, in the last project. Consequently, I don't see any reason why the board would not want to, at this point in time, process the, the application as required under the zoning law, including the scheduling of the public hearing for 6:45 on September 16th.
But what I'll do is I'll...
And there's a draft, and just a, and there's a draft resolution to that effect on, on page four.
Members of the planning board, any questions? Mr. Wheeler or anyone else involved with the application?
Hm?
Hearing none. Let me just read this little resolution. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on the, and I'll get the date, "Applications by Core Group Properties LLC for special use permit pursuant to Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Sections 12520 and 12568 EEE, and site plan approval pursuant to Section 12573 herein in the matter of a proposed special event venue in the Office Research Park District. All is depicted on three site plan drawings, site plan cover sheet CS1 dated August 2nd, 2013, site plan prepared for the greenhouse at Rhinebeck dated January 17th, 2012, and marked three, and proposed site plan P2 dated August 2nd, 2013, and in supporting data including a project narrative, a full environmental assessment form, Part One certified by soon to come from Dan Schuster." Okay, and we'll get the date on that when we get it? Okay. One, accepts the aforementioned applications and supporting data as adequate for commencing planning board consult and public review. Two, classifies the proposed action as described in the applications as an unlisted action under Seeker for which coordinated environmental quality review is neither required nor will it be conducted. Delegates planning board members, who would like to go?
I'll go.
I'll go.
Bob and Jesse? Okay. To conduct a field visit at the subdivisions, at the, at the, at the project site, the project site, and report their observations at the time of public hearing. Refers the applications to the Town Conservation Advisory Board for review and comment. Refers the applications to the planning board engineer for review and comment. Refers the applications to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for review and advisory opinion pursuant to Section 239 of the General Municipal Code. Schedules a combined public hearing on the application from Monday, September 16th, 2013, at 6:45 PM, and directs the clerk to provide or otherwise cause notice and posting thereof pursuant to the requirements set forth within Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, including required notice to the clerk of the town of Red Hook. Further directs the clerk to distribute the agriculture data statement as required under New York State Ag and Markets Law. Without prejudice to the planning board's consideration of any input received prior to or at the public hearing and subject to the aforementioned modification in the proposal, authorizes the planning consultant to consider input resulting from the above cited referrals as well as his own review of the applications and prepare working drafts of EAF Part Two Negative Declaration under Seeker and a conditional approval resolution for review and consideration by the board when timely and if deemed appropriate.
And ten, requires, requires submission of copies of applications for sanitary sewage disposal and public water supply as submitted to the Dutchess County Health Department.
Okeydoke. Could I hear a motion to approve?
No.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. So we'll see, uh-oh.
No, no. For the people that are going out through the board, if you want to give me a call, I'd be happy to go with you.
Okay.
Let me tell you that my phone number is 758-3926, Dan Wheeler.
Very good.
Then I'll be happy to go with you.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, great.
And the CAB, contact the CAB to let them know when you all are going out.
Okay.
All righty then, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Moving right along. Jonathan Mensch, Mensch Grassmere LLC, Mill Road and New York State Route 9 South, special use permit, wetland permit and site plan approval. Continuation of Seeker compliance process as initiated on July 15th, 2013, through classification of the project as a type one action, identification of other involved and/or interested agencies, the declaration of intent to serve as lead agency for coordinated environmental quality review in the matter of the closed Grassmere Farm Hotel, a country in two, and the rural agricultural RA-10 and Hudson River National Historic Landmark Districts, and the town's local waterfront revitalization area, review of responses to notice of intent to serve as lead agency and discussion of environmental review requirements. Okay, we have heard from, let me see, we have heard from...
You have heard from, I'll summarize the, the seeker, the seeker procedural aspect. The notice of intent, including all of the attached documents, was circulated, I believe, two days after the, the last meeting. Thirty-plus days have elapsed since that particular time. Notice was sent to all of the confirmed and the potential involved agencies as required under Seeker. You have received, in writing, consent to your service as lead agency from NISTOT, New York State DOT, New York State DEC, New York State Ag and Markets, and the New York State Office of Parks and Recreation, and you have received no dissent to that, to that serving, to your serving as lead agency from any of the other agencies. In that, thirty days have passed, and that is the maximum period that's provided under Seeker for the submission of any statement of dissent. The planning board is in a position at this point in time to declare itself lead agency. You declared previously your intent, now you may declare your actual status as lead agency. And before we move on to the rest of the proceeding, which builds upon that, there's a resolution, it's somewhat detailed on pages six and seven, that deals with the assumption of lead agency status. And that's the first thing that needs to happen here. Then we can talk about how the seeker process will proceed.
From there. All right, here we go. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows in the matter of a proposed action by Mensch Grassmere LLC applicant involving the development of the Grassmere Farm Hotel within a 250-acre set aside of a 525-acre property on Mill Road and New York State Route 9 South in the rural agricultural RA-10 and Hudson River National Historic Landmark Districts and the town's local waterfront revitalization area being subject of an application for special use permit for a country in two submitted to the planning board on July 1st, 2013, and there, and heretofore classified as a type one action under Seeker for which coordinated environmental quality review is required. One, accepts certification from John Montague of Grand Greenman Patterson, Inc., acceptable to the planning board clerk that the planning board's seeker notice of intent to serve as lead agency, copy annexed and dated, I'll get that date, was distributed to the following on, and I'll get that date, confirmed or potential involved agencies named by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, Central and Regional Office Three, the New York State Department of Transportation, Region Office Eight, New York State Department of Health, Bureau of Water Supply, the Dutchess County Health Department, Environmental Health Division, the Village of Rhinebeck, the Town of Rhinebeck Zoning Board of Appeals, the Town of Rhinebeck Highway Superintendent, and the Town of Rhinebeck Zoning Administrator, and interested agencies named by the U.S. Department of, the Army Corps of Engineers, New York District, the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, Field Service Bureau, the New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets, the New York State Department of State Coastal Management Program, Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, the Town of Rhinebeck Conservation Advisory Board, the Town of Rhinebeck Building Department, and the Supervisor of the Town of Rhinebeck. Acknowledges receipt of responses to the aforementioned NOI, a copy each being annexed heretofore, having been received in the following, and Art just read those off, which I think completes that list. Three, notes that none of the responses expresses any dissent to the planning board serving as seeker lead agency for coordinated environmental review of the proposed action. Four, in the absence of any expressed dissent and in the presence of the passage of more than thirty calendar days since the distribution of the NOI, declares the planning board to be the seeker lead agency for coordinated environmental quality review of the proposed action and accepts all duties and responsibilities related to the positions as set forth in Title VI, Part 1, 617 NYCRR. Could I hear a motion to approve?
No.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Moving right along. Well, we're moving right along, so that everyone understands, this action requires a special use permit for the country in two, I believe there's a wetland permit involved, and site plan approval before the project can go forward. Typically, we run special use permit and site plan concurrently, because that's what the applicants want, but we're under no obligation to do that in this case. In this instance, the applicant has asked us to consider the special use permit on its own for, for reasons of getting the project going and going out looking for other people who might wish to work with them on that. There's no reason we can't do that. Normally, we run them concurrently at the request of the applicant. It takes longer not to run them concurrently, but under this circumstance, there's no reason why we can't do this.
Furthermore, the applicant in this particular case has objected or basically offered the preparation of an environmental impact statement, is not sitting back waiting for the app, for the planning board to, to identify environmental issues and require, identify potential environmental issues and require the preparation of the, of an environmental impact statement. The applicant is saying, in this particular case, it's to their benefit, to the board's benefit, to identify right up front the potential environmental issues, potential infrastructure issues that are involved with the project, and to move forward on the preparation of a generic environmental impact statement. That's a perfectly acceptable and perfectly laudable, acceptable procedure and perfectly laudable approach, frankly, that I've employed in represent, in representation of several clients over the years, and I know that John and his people in their office have done likewise. The call for a generic environmental impact statement is a tool to address a project that we have a good feel right now for the overall development plan, but not necessarily the detailing of each of the components as they may evolve over, over a period of time. What happens in the case of a generic is you address project-wide environmental issues through the generic environmental impact statement, and as site-specific proposals come in for developments of defined elements of the plan, in this case, there may be three or four different elements, there is a review conducted of any additional site-specific concerns, environmental concerns regarding that particular element, and an analysis made of the consistency of that particular element as it comes forward with the overall evaluation that's occurred through the environmental impact statement. The applicant in this case has proposed, or the applicant's planner and engineer have proposed a, an outlined scope for the, the general, generic environmental impact statement. As set forth in my notes, I reviewed that, that scope. I found it to be quite comprehensive, not surprisingly, because it followed some advanced consultation that had occurred with the chair, with myself, with the, the planning board engineer, so it was not submitted as a shot in the dark. It was done after, after consultation with us regarding the environmental issues prospectively involved here. I simply recommended that there be two items added to the generic scope, one being a, another section essentially of the, of the generic EIS that would evaluate the consistency of the proposal with the coastal policies set forth in the town's LWRP. There's a section already that deals with the consistency with zoning, et cetera. I, I recommend that there be another section added, a, an individual section dealing with consistent with coastal policies, and further that there be requirement, just a general requirement, an overall requirement, that the draft generic environmental address, EIS address any and all comments that were received from involved or interested agencies on the basis of the circulation of the notice of intent to serve as lead agency. And I note in particular that I think the, the broadest, the most numerous of those comments were made by New York State DEC, generally related to their, their permit requirements, just pointing out to, to this board and pointing out to the applicant the variety of permit requirements that need to be met. The only other comment I would have in terms of opening this and before turning it to the board and turning it to the applicant is that we had, after the, the scope was submitted on the 12th, the, the hope was that I would have an opportunity to, to comment, which I, I have, and as I said, I found it quite comprehensive, and that the planning board engineer would do likewise. Ray Jokowski has been on vacation last week, I think he was on vacation through today, so I would think that any position taken on the generic or any discussion on the generic this evening simply provides the opportunity for incorporating any additional comment that, like, like my comments, any additional comment that Ray might offer in the next, you know, next few days upon having the opportunity to review. I don't think Ray's comments will be extensive, because again, Ray was part of the discussions that led to the preparation of this, this outlined scope.
And I guess there are two things I'd point out. First of all, the town, the planning board, we have to accept the scope, that we feel it's complete. We are always able to add more to it. We have to accept it before that process goes forward. The second thing is, I guess the only sort of big example I can think of that...
Number two.
I might interject, because you made a very important point about the board's accepting. If the board accepts the scope, the board is also obligated to circulate the scope to each of the involved agencies, and if the involved agencies have comments regarding items that they believe should be added to the scope, the lead agency will have to consider incorporating those in the scope. So this is, again, it's, it's one of those procedural, procedural aspects.
And as I was about to say, is that the other project that we worked on the last couple of years was the gardens. There was a special use permit issued in 1987, basically with a generic environmental impact statement, with each phase of that project requiring a detailed environmental review as well as other review process before it could be permitted to go forward. So we're... to go forward. So we're in a somewhat similar vein here. Hopefully, this won't take 25 years like that one did. But that's basically how this will work. And, any questions, members of the planning board?
I don't have a question.
Okay. Well, let me read the resolution that I have.
Hold it, hold it.
Let me not read the resolution I have yet.
Gentlemen, have we, have I stolen your, your spiel?
Well, I must say that that was very eloquently placed on the, on the agenda here. So, we're in full concurrence. The outline that we put together, I think, covers the main topics that we all discussed together when we first brought our application before you. Clearly, we'll wait for comments back from Ray, from the engineering standpoint, and then circulate to the board members here to review that scope. And when you're ready to let us know that that's a complete scope for your purposes, we'd be more than happy to help circulate that also to the involved and interested agencies.
Okay. All righty then. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board?
Hold, hold, let me, let me just graph something. On, under number two, where there's a blank?
Which blank?
A blank.
Yeah.
Blank?
There's a lot of lines.
Oh, down below.
Yes.
I think I would put my glasses on. Yes?
Modifications, if any, to address comments.
Okay, you're going to read this one.
Or this, oh...
That section.
Just one second. Let me just...